All right, good evening. It is Tuesday, May 9th, 6:00 PM. Welcome, everybody, to the North Brookfield Board of Selectmen's meeting. If you'll rise and join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 21st, 2023, March 28th, 2023, and March 28th, 2023, executive session.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 23 for $355,016.46. General warrant number 1057 for $88,775. School warrant number 1058 for $203,616.75. And general warrant number 1059 for $104,732.20.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an ARPA recommendation.
Two.
Two? Oh, two ARPA, yep. One is for hiring of a town administrator using ARPA funds. This is based on review of past study committee reports, including the current master plan recommendations. We've concluded that hiring an experienced town administrator would be a positive step to take at this time. We recommend making approximately $400,000 available to fund this position starting in fiscal year 2024. As soon as reasonably practicable, all ARPA funds must be allocated by December 31st, 2024, and spent by December 31st, 2026. Respectfully, Ethan Malad, Chair, North Brookfield ARPA Committee. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Tying up $400,000 worth of ARPA money, I think we could use that to better the town in a different way than tying it up for a town administrator. I personally don't think that we need a town administrator at this time. And that $400,000, I believe, could be better used on projects in town. We've given different amounts of money to other things, and I haven't seen any of it being used yet. The landfill got thousands of dollars to repair the cap down there. The senior center got thousands of dollars to put a second door on. Handicap, I haven't seen that done yet. So I think that money could be better used at different projects in town. Just my opinion.
I mean, I I think it's really important to follow what the master plan recommendations are. And I think if ARPA is willing to, the ARPA committee is willing to set aside the money for a town administrator and put forth support for that kind of study, then I support that as well.
Okay, well, I think so this is something that's been discussed for years. And I think I'm kind of torn on it. You know, because I do think that the idea has merit. Other people I've talked to, I've talked to some from other towns that have gotten the have gotten, gone with the town administrator, and they have not been happy. And then I've talked to others that were against it, but then, once they got the town administrator, they were surprisingly pleased with what had gone on with the new administrator, once that person had been hired. But also, to John's point, there were a lot of infrastructure things that we could get done with that $400,000.
Can we table this for two weeks till we figure out what else we could use it for?
Probably. What's the is this for three years?
It's for, so all the ARPA funds have to be completely spent down by the end of calendar year 26, so.
Right, but the but the $400,000 is to pay for an administrator for how long?
As long, I mean, if we got started next month, then it depended on the salary that you negotiated and however long we'd stretch it for, basically.
I think from our discussions, we talked about it being like a three-year salary.
Most likely, it just depends on what the actual salary would be and what the benefits package is and stuff like that. Because if you're paying $100,000 a year, including benefits, then that's, you know, four years. But number one, we don't actually have that much time. And number two, it might be more expensive than that. So that's why we put the 400, because it gave some leeway in terms of how much you're paying and then how long term it would be.
Right.
Ethan, would this include the fee for consultation? Because it's likely that in that process to hire a town administrator that we would need a consultant and somebody to guide a study group.
Yeah.
And a team.
Doesn't specifically, but I don't I think that, I guess it might sort of be up to you as to sort of how you use that. I mean, the recommendation just says to use use the money for the hiring of. So I would expect that, you know, that can be up to you to, you know, whether it's a, you know, a committee that then gets paid or a consultant that gets paid or whoever. I think that probably if the board has any request for additional expenses that we wanted to bring to the ARPA committee, if we needed to do it that way, I think we could do it that way, too.
Okay.
All right. Do you mind?
Go ahead.
Just a little. Just to let you know, a couple, a couple of numbers that Mr. King was able to get from towns close to us that now have administrators and managers. So Brookfield did not, for a very long time, have anyone in that position. They have a town administrator now. She was hired, I want to say, just the middle of last year?
Two years ago.
Okay. And according to what Bill's found out, she happened to be a lawyer as well. And being as such, she saved the town of Brookfield 50% of their legal costs that they would have incurred since then. Warren has a town manager who, in addition to, you know, the sort of administrative position, also acts as HR, puts all the job descriptions together, annual reviews, and is also a grant writer. So the person who takes on the position most likely will be sort of multifaceted and hopefully be flexible enough to, you know, accommodate the needs of Brookfield. And I think, as Brooke said, since 2007, the plan mentioned it as well, right? So it's been going on a long time. It's been identified as a need that would, that would help the town. So based on the stuff that we saw. And then there was also the local rapid recovery plan, which identified a town manager or some sort of interdepartmental liaison. I believe that the ULI report that the friends of the townhouse worked on also identified someone in that position. So it's a sort of a long-running thing that we thought that this is, this is money that we haven't had before. Who knows when we're going to be able to capitalize on this sort of thing again without creating a fairly sizable salary position. So, you know, and we thought at the very least it was worth exploring.
I do think it's worth exploring. I also think that we need, we should probably look at, you know, take a couple more weeks to look at things because we do have, going into the new year, we do have a very large budget deficit to cover. And if we can do some infrastructure things with that, it might be the wiser thing to do. But I think we could table it for two weeks and see what happens. We'll discuss it more.
Did you say something?
My only point was is that since this has been discussed since 2007, then it was in the 2010 master plan, that this is the only opportunity the town has to fund it with federal money instead of town tax dollars. And so we can run this two- or three-year experiment. And it's, granted, it's money that has opportunity cost with other projects, but it's also not raising the tax rate for our town to give this experiment a chance.
If you hire the right person, I think I've looked at a lot of like grants and the complications involved in applying for grants. If you hire the right person who can apply for the right grants, this will pay for itself, really. There's so many grants out there, and people just don't have time to explore them or go through the whole process of applying for them. It's just a ton of work. So that, if you, like I said, if you hire the right person, like you said, it's worth exploring, I think. You know, and see what happens. I wouldn't just dismiss it without really an exploration into the benefits of it.
Well, we didn't say anything about dismissing.
No, I didn't say that. I just, I didn't say you did. I'm just saying that I think it's, if you can get the right person, it's more than going to pay for itself.
So Bill makes a good point that it's federal money that we can use that we won't expend any taxpayer revenue on at this time. So what are your thoughts on that?
It's not going to make a difference in hiring if we go another two weeks and let's explore other projects in town. It's $400,000 that we could definitely use on some other things in town, I believe.
I'm fine with tabling it if.
Anything else to add, or?
No.
All right. All right, I'll entertain a motion to table.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It's a table for two weeks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next request is for $1,377.58 to fund a server upgrade necessary for implementation of vision software for the assessor's office. I'll entertain a motion to approve that ARPA request for $1,377.58.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
No, they need the upgrade, so.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so what we'll do next? We've got two minutes until we have a CDBG hearing. That's what you're here for?
Yeah.
All right. So we've got a VFW, American Legion Request for Resources, May 29th Memorial Day Parade. It has the police chief, fire chief, and EMS director approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for resources for the parade, Memorial Day Parade. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
I just have a question because it's not, it hasn't filled out Town Resources being requested. I know this is like an annual thing, so, but I just wanted to make sure that I had everything correct. So they're going to shut down the street for the parade, and they're going to do the service in front of the library and the church?
Yep.
Is there anything else I'm missing?
Well, they do the they do the services at the cemetery prior to that.
In cemetery.
But it doesn't shut anything down.
Okay.
Anything else? Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. You're up.
Oh, hey. So my name's Christopher Dunphy. I'm a principal planner with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. What I do, and some of the other planners in the section at the agency, is we work with a lot of smaller towns throughout the region, identify needed projects, see if we could get some grant funds, in this case, in the name of the Community Development Block Grant, to fund them. And then we help the town manage the projects if those grants are awarded. So these grants, Community Development Block Grant, it's a federal program that started in the early 1970s. And by and large, Congress has to go to bat every year to appropriate the funds to continue this CDBG program. And by and large, people like it. It's a pretty successful program. The vast majority of these funds go to what we call entitlement cities. These are larger cities, generally speaking, of 50,000 people or more. And they get monies automatically by a formula. You know, so you've Boston, Worcester, Springfield, Chicagoe, and so on, automatically get funds directly from HUD by a formula, and they work with HUD. Now, smaller cities and towns have to compete annually through the Department of Housing and Community Development in the state. Okay, and that's where we come in. So we sit down, we work with local committees, local boards of selectmen, sort of identify what we think are eligible projects in the Community Development Block Grant Program. We will assemble the grant. It's open and active through the Community Development Block Grant Program. This is the FY 2019, the FY 2020. Those are the principal projects that we're here to talk about tonight. But seeing them here, we'll also speak up the FY 21, which is just sort of launching, okay? Any questions so far? All right. So the FY 19 program, which was a $600,000 grant, is largely funding housing rehabilitation services. And what we did a while ago in what we call the West Side Neighborhood Infrastructure Planning Study. And that project hired a professional engineering firm to assess the condition of infrastructure throughout that whole neighborhood in the hopes, as time goes by, we can pluck off projects within that area and seek future Community Development Block Grant funds to resolve some of the issues in that neighborhood. The housing rehabilitation program, there was funding for approximately 12 households in the town. And we're nearing the end of that particular program. Housing rehabilitation will provide assistance to families of low and moderate income. As an example, when I say moderate income, specifically, that means 80% of the median income. So don't hold me to this figure. If it's a household of one, that's approximately like $58,000 per year. And then, you know, based on the number of persons in the household, that income level would go up. So say 58 for one, 60-something for two people in the household, and so on and so forth. That's the primary eligible criteria for housing rehab. The other criteria is you actually have to have building code issues that need to be resolved. There's lead paint, there's a failing roof, failing windows. It's not a renovation program. It's not an expansion of a home. It's rehabilitation. So people try to come into the program, "Hey, I want to redo my bathroom." No, we can rehab things that don't need code. That's the purpose of the housing rehab program. And so that particular program, the FY 19, is winding down. And we're planning to recommend closure of that program by June 30th, 2023. And again, that program funded the West Side Infrastructure Planning Study and Housing Rehabilitation.
Do you know how many in town were done in North Brookfield? Because don't we share it with Brookfield?
Nine properties involving 10 units have advanced through the program, and most are now complete or substantially complete. So some of the costs had gone up from when we actually wrote the grant. So we didn't accomplish, when we wrote the grant, we thought we would do 12. And we ended up doing 10 because the average cost of a three-ambilitation unit was $1,000.
So they'll be finished?
10 are going to be done.
Okay.
By June. That's through the 2019 program. Okay? So the so the 2020 program, okay, was a joint community grant with the town of Brookfield, and that grant was valued at $800,000. Again, the programs were, one was a continuation of the housing rehabilitation program. And that particular program, the grant was written to provide approximately funding for seven units for each town, okay, under the same guiding principles. And it's my understanding that, let me see here. Eight units have currently advanced, three in North Brookfield and five in Brookfield. I don't know why. There's a lengthy income qualification process. It often takes time to get the accurate documentation from the homeowners to proceed with the project. Then there's a lead paint inspection and so on and so forth. But there's still room within that program to do some units, and it's ongoing. So that's the rehab program. The second project, which is of interest, and it was alluded to briefly just a little while ago, was the Senior Center Improvement Project. Initially, there was $125,000 allocated to that. But right away, when we started considering to put out to bid, we knew right away that it was underfunded, you know, based on what we wanted to accomplish there. The CDBG portion, the intent was to do the whole new roof and then do the floor. That was what the CDBG program was going to do. But along the way, we understood that there was a local initiative. You wanted to add the second door, as you say, and build a ramp and sort of made it accessible, so make it more appropriate for voting, I guess, is what I was told. So there was going to be a nice ramp, a nice new entryway, and different things. And so we bid it together, and the costs were absurd. They were extremely high, and they had to be rejected, and that didn't happen, so.
Do we still have that, those funds for the door?
Well, those were your funds. You were going to use ARPA funds.
So it didn't get spent?
So you still have them, we didn't use them.
Okay.
So, but.
Do you still have them in your cost projection, or?
That's not a CDBG project. That was going to be a locally-funded ARPA project that we just happened to bid together, thinking we'd get a better bid.
So we can still, as the board, send that?
Yeah, absolutely.
For ourselves, so.
As a matter of fact, through CDBG, though, we did hire an architect, and they did put together some rough plans to do that project, should you want to pursue that moving forward.
Can we get them?
If I continue, I have a couple of thoughts there. So it's important that we do advance the CDBG initiative because they have, you know, more stringent guidelines, more tighter timelines and everything. And so the architect and I, we evaluate, what went wrong with that bid? Well, one of the things we realized is that there were unknown aspects related to the roof of the senior center, specifically involving asbestos. So we actually hired, you know, an abatement specialist. And just recently, we climbed up on the roof. We took some samples. And we're clearing up the mystery, so to speak, because we believe the mystery may have led to an extremely high bid. So the testing was done, and there is asbestos, but nowhere near to the level of being a significant problem. I don't know how they described the the roof is like composed of like several different layers over the years from whatever it originally was years ago, and then another layer, and then another layer. And one of those layers had a thin sort of membrane. And as part of that membrane, the paint of the membrane actually contains a little bit of asbestos. But it's not significant, and we think it can be resolved pretty easily during a construction bid. So we want to go out again to bid through CDBG only and just the roof. That's what we think we have money for. I got a new estimate from the architect, and they think it's valued at around $126,000, $127,000. So we intend to put that out to bid right away just for the roof and get that done because it's the most critical, important aspect of that senior center. It was up there. It's spongy all over the place. It's got the potential for leaks all over the place, and it's not in good shape. So that's a good investment and something that really should be done right away with the CDBG funds that we have available for.
Without touching the other.
Without touching the other.
Okay.
Now, I'm willing to help on the side once we get this roof thing behind us, should the town want to continue with that other effort. It's just going to help maybe identify more of a local contractor because one thing, when pooling them together, it drove the overall cost of the project much higher, you know, requiring like DCAM certifications and sub-bids and all this and that. I think if we, by separating now this time, maybe you could find a local contractor that can build a ramp more simply and more inexpensively and get it done. And there are some plans to do that.
Would you be willing to give the plans up?
Sure, sure. They're available?
We could use, that would be great if.
Absolutely.
Because I'm sure there's locals that would.
Yep, and I know of some, actually, some that do that housing rehab program. Would probably be more than qualified to do that effort, actually.
Yeah.
So I'm proposing we get the roof done, then we loop back. And if you want to use the ARPA money to do that entrance, that could happen.
Well, I saw it was planned.
And I don't think the floor actually needs to be done. If you've ever been in there, the floor is in actually reasonably good condition. The only emphasis for doing the floor was is the surface has different colors and different textures. And it was proposed back then, when the grant was written, that those different textures could interfere with like people's vision, and they think it's like a tripping hazard. But it's really in decent shape.
It is. I'm in there all the time. I go around, see the old people all the time, so.
So those are the two projects as part of the FY 20 program. And like I said, we intend to bid out the roof project right away. And the housing rehab program is ongoing. If anyone has interest in housing rehab, I would encourage them to contact our office at the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. They could get the contact information through your administrative assistant. Again, that's to address code issues, lead paint, roofs, siding, weatherization, septic systems, anything that doesn't need building code. So those are the performance, the formal performance hearing years 19 and 20. And will it be any questions? I would be happy to answer regarding those two years.
Does anybody have any questions?
The senior said, does that include the ceiling or no?
Unfortunately, it doesn't. That was another part of that first bid, I know.
Just to clear up that.
Yep, thank you for asking. I did forget about that. So the new estimate does not include the replacement of that ceiling tile. But, you know, just, we can always loop back to the senior center with CDBG. It will be eligible for future years. So in a future year, if that's deemed a priority in the future, we can address it.
Well, now that we know it's not in that scope, in your scope, sometimes we can get donations of tiles.
Right.
Something like that, which I think if we go after a donation, that might happen. And it's just changing the tile. The grid is fine there.
And there are other sources of funds, you know, that are out there. You know, as you know, there's the one-stop-for-growth. There's monies through the Mass, you know, senior folks. And so there are multitude of different funding options that are out there, you know, that could be explored.
Brooke, do you have any questions?
No.
Do you have any more questions?
Nope.
Anybody else?
Does the architect's estimate, does he have allowances for possible deck replacement? And if you said it was spongy, I don't know if that has an impact. If there's three layers of roof on it, it's probably leaked over time. It sounds like they didn't pull it off and put new decking in there.
There is a contingency, and there is a value in there should some of the actual decking need to be replaced.
Okay.
I would like to tell you about the third year, which isn't really formally part of the performance hearing because it's just getting started. So Brook, North Brookfield was also awarded a $786,000 grant through the FY 21 CDBG. And this is just an outgrowth of that West Side Planning Study that was done. The planning study revealed inadequacies in some of the water, the sewer, the drainage, the streets, and sidewalk throughout that neighborhood. And Mount Pleasant was determined to be the one that should be done first. You know, so a grant was sought and funded to do both engineering and design. And unfortunately, there wasn't enough money in the cycle of grants, so we're restricted to just doing the water name. So that's going to be a phased project. Phase one is doing the complete. Phase one is doing the complete engineering design and installing the water main on Mount Pleasant Street. Then it'll have to be trench patched, and we can come back in a future year and see CDBG or, or other sources that are out there. I know I've gotten them, One Stop. Uh, you know, it, it's a popular grant that we've been able to get recently in other towns. Uh, anyways, uh, in future years, to do the drainage, the streets and the sidewalk, and maybe some other, is there sewer there? Yeah, some minor sewer repairs as needed. So that, that's the, the FY twenty-one. And we, we have a design engineering firm on board. I believe it was just a couple of weeks ago that you signed the contract. So we're going to do a startup meeting really soon with that and, uh, you know, get it going. It'll probably take them a, a few months or so to complete the design. And then maybe we'll bid it out in late, late summer, early fall. Maybe we could start it, but I'll probably recommend to the town that you, you extend the grant and bid it out during the winter, when people are hungry for work, and then start it up in the spring. So we'll see how the design goes.
So out of that seven eighty-six, we're spending one forty-nine and one forty on administrative support?
Well, one forty-nine is for the full, complete design engineering.
Yeah.
And for clerk of the works.
Yeah.
And the one forty is for CMRPC to help you manage the grant.
Okay, so that's two, that's three hundred off of the seven eighty-six for paperwork.
Yep.
Right.
Well, not paperwork.
Well, the engineering and I, I think, so you end up with four hundred thousand.
Something like that.
To, to do the project, so. Just so they know where the money goes, a lot of it goes to the engineering, the clerk of the works, and, you know, you're doing your,
Right.
your stuff for us.
Yep, absolutely. The thing with the CMRPC is we exist, uh, you know, we're, we're a regional planning agency. Um, so we don't draw tax dollars to get our, our building and a, a chair to sit in. So we, we need to charge an overhead.
Sure.
You know, that is, so if, if I'm billing at forty, it almost doubles to cover our overhead. The computers, the, the building that we rent, and so on and so forth. So it can seem like a lot, but.
Well, just so they know on, on campus and stuff, you know, we got seven eighty-six, but you're spending three just about for the, I'd say paperwork, but for your, your expertise.
It's about twenty percent of each grant.
Yeah.
To have us, you know, develop it, write it, and manage it, okay? And then the engineering is what it is. You have to have the engineering done. And you want someone that's trained on the site to watch over the contractor.
Yep.
To make sure they're billing it properly, so.
Yep.
Yeah, they are added costs, no doubt.
Yep, yep. All right, um, any more questions?
No, that sounds great.
I'm done.
All right, good. I would just encourage you, there are, I mean, I've been successful in other communities. There are other grants out there. I know you have another committee that, that helps you with them. Uh, the, the Mass, uh, One Stop Per Growth can fund the infrastructure projects. And, uh, that's one source, DEP, so they're, they're out there. If you ever need our help guiding you towards these other things, please call us.
Are you still actively looking for more to finish this project or no?
I'm sorry?
Are you actively looking for more grants to, like, to finish this project or?
I had an idea for, you know, I've been stretched a little thin personally, but I, I had some ideas in the West, uh, West Side neighborhood. I, I think there are a couple of streets that would qualify, uh, through Mass Works. It used to be formerly called Strap. Is anyone from the highway here? No? So Strap, it, uh, it was formerly called Strap, and that Small Town Rule Assistance Program or something like that. And they rolled it into the, the One Stop. And it's to address, uh, roads, local roads, that may have safety issues. And right there, right down with that, with the huge wall, the poor sidewalk, that might have been a good candidate for the, the former Strap and now the One Stop program. So that was one idea I had, you know.
Is there anything we can look at for doing the sewer pipe while we're doing the water pipe? At the same time, you know, uh, so we don't have to dig it up in two years?
The sewer for Mount Pleasant will be part of phase two with the drainage, the streets and sidewalk.
But we don't have that money.
We don't have it now. It'd be next grant, we, or someone helps write for you guys. North Brookfield presumably would be eligible for the next round in, uh, um, March. We don't know for sure when they may make it available, but we're thinking it might be March of twenty-four.
Can you keep us informed, what source and when?
I'll need to do a public hearing specifically for the, for the twenty-one grant.
Yeah.
Maybe in the summer.
Yeah.
Sometime. Well, thank you for, uh, your attention. I really appreciate you being here and.
Thank you.
And working with you folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
We have a one-day liquor license request for Stars and Stripes. That's the VFW on July first. Arthur Deom is the applicant. He's the, uh, general manager. Um, one second. Um, hmm, it's from twelve to nine P M. It's the Outdoor Customer Appreciation Day, approximate number in attendance, thirty to forty. Uh, we have done these, um, before. Um, I want to say in a motion to approve the one-day liquor license.
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion?
And they're doing it in the parking lot?
Yes.
On Maple Street, so it's not on the neighborhood, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's good. Uh, Joe?
Um, I just wanted to bring up because I happened to notice on the form here, he said that was actually put in to be for this Saturday, not July first.
Oh.
Oh, I have on mine July first.
Yeah.
Date of event on ours says July first.
Guys, I just, I, I just wanted to mention it because I, as soon as I saw it, I got in touch with him. He said that it was for, he wanted it for this Saturday. He was trying to call me during this whole thing, but.
And what's, what's the date this Saturday that's?
May fifteenth?
Thirteen?
Fifteenth.
Thirteen.
Do we have a consensus?
Get out those phones.
All right.
Is there any way to verify that that's what he wants, or he's not calling me back?
I'd have to call him. Because he, he tried, he's tried calling me a few times. I just didn't want to disrupt the meeting.
His number's on the, can you?
Yeah, I thought that, uh, because I've talked to people that are working down there. And I didn't think July first was, um, I thought that was too far out for what they were talking about, but, um, can you call him? And, uh, we can come back to this afterward.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, he did send me a message. He said, Joe, it's for, fix for Saturday night, the thirteenth of May.
Oh, thirteen.
All right, um.
Do we want to run with that, or do we want to wait for the phone call?
We can run with it. I mean, if it doesn't.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's not that date, then it ain't happening anyway.
I, I don't think it's going to affect anybody else.
He's pretty adamant it was for this Saturday, this coming Saturday.
All right, so, uh, we'll revise the motion and, um, it's in motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Stars and Stripes for May thirteenth from, uh, twelve to nine P M.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I've got plenty of time before July first, too, to get it approved, so.
Yeah.
If it's not.
Can you pass that down?
Yes.
All right. All right, Open Space Guidelines. So who, who worked on the Open Space Guidelines? Brandon, do you want to give us a quick rundown on what that is?
On the list there?
Yep.
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you want me to read it so everybody knows? Because he, I, he doesn't have.
You want to read it?
Yeah.
You want to read it?
You can read it.
You have a microphone.
Yeah, and then, I mean, probably read the eight numbered things there.
You don't want the whole thing?
Well, I'll read the whole thing. It'll only take a minute. And I'll only take a minute on like two minutes, I was.
Okay, that's a deal. Uh, these guys have been working on the Open Space Use Guidelines in light of recent discoveries of unauthorized use of town-owned open space conservation areas. I think it is in the best interest of the town to issue a public statement on what is permitted and not permitted on such property. This is not intended to be a complete list, but a starting point and may be modified depending on the particular parcel of land and wishes of the select board or overseeing committee. This also does not apply to town-owned property that is in active use and already has rules in place, such as the Common Rail Trail and Town Forest Park, et cetera. Some suggestions. Number one, no cutting or taking of wood, stone, or any other materials or resource, resources from town-owned open space. No building of structures, temporary or permanent. Any such, such structures shall be removed immediately. Number three, no dumping of trash or any other debris, including wood, brush, or leaves. Number four, no campfires or access after dark and before sunrise. Uh, number five, all dogs must be leashed and any dropping are to be removed from any trail or pathway. Number six, no furniture, chairs, benches, and the like to be left in such parcels except as authorized by the select board or committee responsible for the care of such spaces. Number seven, no unauthorized motor vehicles of any kind. Number eight, it shall be the responsibility of persons wishing to travel on any town-owned property to be aware of the limits and boundaries of said property and not intrude onto private property.
Uh, there was a modification on number two to allow, uh, tree stands during hunting season. Uh, I don't know.
I don't have that on here, so.
Oh, okay.
So we are going to allow temporary tree stands for the hunting season.
In areas where hunting is permitted, tree stands may be placed a week before the start of hunting season and must be removed within a week after the conclusion of hunting season.
Okay.
I think we agreed on that.
On, on the actual railroad property?
No, not the railroad.
This is Open Space.
Oh, Open Space, okay.
All right.
Yeah, all right. I thought, yeah, we went, we went over that and had the updated one.
But that's good. So the hunters are safe with their tree stands.
Oh, and, uh, number one, uh, no taking of wood or any, uh.
Stone or any other material.
Except by, uh, permission of the governing authority, like, you know, the select, board of selectmen. If you're, uh, if we do cutting for a particular person, purpose, and then that would maybe be removed with permission.
Okay.
By the select board.
All right.
And what else do we have? Oh, we added a.
Kind of get your revisions back in and we'll.
Yeah, I, I.
Wish we had them earlier.
I did hand them, I did hand them out.
I looked, this was the only one I had.
Oh.
I don't know where the other one went.
No, he, I remember, yeah, he gave them to us.
Yeah.
I put them in his bag.
And no alcohol, all of beverages carried into or consumed on property. You want to modify them? No alcohol beverages.
I want to say in the motion to approve the Open Space Public Use Guidelines as amended by Brandon Avery.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Nope, I think it's a welcome thing. People are going to know what, what's what.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Um, let's see, we have a request to remove Nancy Nikle as the Cloud Administrator for the town of North Brookfield and replace her with Sheila LeBlanc. Uh, Ms. LeBlanc assumed the role of the town accountant in February of twenty twenty-one. So I want to entertain a motion to, um, remove Nancy Nikle as Cloud Administrator and replace her with Sheila LeBlanc.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
Nope, and I want to thank Nancy for helping us out.
Yep, absolutely. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. All right, public comment period. Go ahead.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Tara Hayes and the whole workers, as well as the North Brookfield Police Department. I was very impressed with the efficiency, not only the efficiency of the town election, but also the, uh, friendliness, the inclusiveness, the welcomeness, everybody, great attitudes. It was a very pleasant experience, which was nice to be had. I want to thank them all.
Excellent. All right. Anybody else?
If you guys don't come up with something, he's going to give me more time.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
Just saying.
All right, um. Go ahead, Joe.
Nope, I'm good. Wow, good today.
All right, announcements. Um, I guess we, uh.
We don't have it.
I guess we're good. All right, I want to say in motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.